Ms. Anderson, here.
Ms. Hines, here.
Mr. Carrick.
Here.
Mrs. Schubain.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Tillage.
Yes.
Dr. Litterer.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Reverend Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Thank you for now in the closed session.
Ms. Anderson, yes.
Ms. Hines, yes.
Mr. Carrick.
Yes.
Mrs. Schubain.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Tillage.
Yes.
Dr. Litterer.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Reverend Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Thank you for now in the closed session.
I move that each board member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge only matters which are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and which were identified in the motion to go into closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the preceding closed meeting.
Motion is made, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Dave. Mr. Tillich. unanimous roll call vote, Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent? Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillich?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker? Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
unanimous.
Agenda item 3.2, discussion item for transgender student model policy, we want to ask that Dr. Cromartie and Mr. Carroll will lead us in that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the school board. To initiate and start your discussion tonight on this agenda item, I'd like to give you a background on how this topic came to be. As you and the public are aware, the General Assembly passed legislation which required the Department of Education to formulate model policies on this topic for consideration and adoption by each school district in Virginia. The Virginia Department of Education, along with various stakeholders and interest holders and advocacy groups across not only Virginia but also the country, met, conferred, and formulated various policies in accordance with the law passed by the General Assembly. You have received prior to this evening a packet from the Department of Education which is publicly available on the Department of Education website called Model Policies for the Treatment of Transgender Students in Virginia's Public Schools. It sets forth not only the regulatory scheme that created the need for implementation but also explanatory provisions on each proposed model policy for each topic area. The law requires the division and each division to adopt policies that are consistent with but maybe more comprehensive than the model policies developed by the Virginia Department of Education. The timeframe for implementation is for the 21-22 school year and it is recommended to give the administration enough time to react to policies that may change their internal procedures at various schools or documents that they be adopted around or on July 1. Happy to answer any questions, but that's the framework for your discussion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from board members? Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.3 is a discussion item for the anti-gun violence and we're going to ask Board Member Ms. Thomas if she will lead us in that.
Sure, so thank you, Chair. So this past Friday, I think, June 4th was National Gun Violence Awareness Day across the country where in solidarity and recognition for victims of gun violence, people wear orange as part of the Wear Orange Campaign. And locally, there was an organization called Stop the Violence 757. Board Members at Atkinson participated in the event just to recognize the families and victims that have been impacted by national gun violence, oh, by gun violence. And I thought it would be a great idea to introduce a resolution for Portsmouth Public Schools that we adopt to make sure that for in the future, we can also stand in solidarity with any gun violence victims and their families. We know that in our city of Portsmouth, there's been an increase in violence and really across the country. And I think just standing in solidarity that we can wear orange as a school system and introduce a resolution that can then lead to some sort of campaign possibly. And working with local organizations that are already on the ground doing the work around gun violence, it would be great for our school system. So, that's really good.
Thank you so much. And she emailed me with that idea. And I wanted to know if I could get a consensus from board members if we will allow staff to work collaboratively to put together a proposed campaign and resolution for the next school year that they can bring back and present to the board at that time if that's okay, if we have consensus with that.
Yes.
Atkinson.
All right, so, Dr. Bracy?
Great idea, yeah. Anything that we can do to help, yeah.
So, Dr. Bracy, if you would get the staff and Lauren and her crew to work on that.
Okay, will do.
Thank you so much. Thank you again, Ms. Thomas, for the idea for that. Agenda item 3.4 is a discussion for communities and schools. And I believe we have Ms. Hope Sinclair and Ms. Anne Wilber with us tonight. And they're going to make a presentation.
Ms. Hope's not here. She's not, I think, some of the people to work with.
Good evening, Chairman Patillo and Vice Chairwoman Atkinson, members of the school board, and Dr. Bracy. My name is Anne Wilber. I'm the Director of Development for Communities and Schools of Hampton Roads. With me, unfortunately, Dr. Sinclair, our executive director had a conflicting meeting this evening. And so I brought with me Shakia Stewart, who is our program director. We're here tonight to present to you some of essentially an update on communities and schools in Hampton Roads and our work in Portsmouth Public Schools. For those of you who are not familiar, Communities and Schools of Hampton Roads is the local affiliate of Communities and Schools, the leading national dropout prevention organization. Through our process that Shakia will go into, we target students who come from families of poverty. Students in families of poverty are twice as likely to drop out of school. But with supports similar to those provided by communities and schools, those students are able to overcome their barriers to success in school. And when they graduate from school, they are more likely to become productive, contributing members of society. And do we have somebody who's going to fast forward our... Okay, hold on. So I've covered that one in three students from the Portsmouth Poverty Study, one in three students in Portsmouth come from families of poverty. And so that's a significant number of Portsmouth Public School students, which I think is why, at the invitation of the superintendent, Communities and Schools of Hampton Roads is serving students in Portsmouth. If you would fast forward one. And we'll, I'll turn it over to Shakia to talk about what it is we actually do.
Hello, everyone. And so with Communities and Schools as a nonprofit focusing on dropout prevention, we start at K through 12. And so we start as early as elementary school because as early as the third grade, those indicators are there. And so our mission is to surround students with a community of support so they can succeed and achieve. And what those supports look like, and you can go to the next slide. How we do that is we bring essential pieces to it. And our essential piece is our site coordinator. They are the heart of what we do. They go inside schools and they become a part of the fabric of a school, that culture. And in that, in them doing that, they're looking at those needs that a school or a student might have that may not be addressed or could not be addressed by the larger body because the focus is educating the student. And so some of those needs could look like basic needs, food being not delivered in the home. It could look like tutoring sessions that they may not be equipped to stay behind school, but that support could be delivered virtually or in person through that site coordinator. We work with community partners. Our partners range from the Girl Scouts of Hampton Roads, Girls on the Run, Hampton Road Southeastern Food Bank. And so we have a list of partners that we work with. They tend to come to us and navigate us because we are in schools. And we bring those supports inside to school to, one, provide opportunities, exposure, and give them a leg up in this next phase of their life, whether it be elementary, going into middle, and then, of course, high school because the goal is graduation and those next steps. And those integrated supports, I've already kind of talked about them, so like life skills, the family engagement piece. And so during this pandemic, a lot of organizations probably would have stopped, but we kept going. Even though we had to change the method of how we reach students, our work did not change. And it became more intense during the season. The next one, please. And so right now, we're serving Portsmouth Public Schools. We're in five of your schools. We've been in Portsmouth since 2013. We started at IC Noricum High School and has since graduated and moved into more schools. So total now, we're in five. We're in two of your elementary schools, two of your middle schools, and your high school, IC Noricum, Crowd Out Middle, Waters, Brighton, and Douglas Park. And so the goal is, is that over, over this course of time, you've seen that the number of students that we typically case manage has increased. So the more schools we are in, the more kids we're actually able to impact. And it's not just, and so when you're looking at those integrated student supports, those supports are for particularly for our case managed students. But when we're able to do whole school supports, because we're tier-based model, tier ones where the whole school can participate in things that we might bring to the school, then you have those tier two and tier three supports that are more individualized and group-focused with our case managed kids. So when you're looking at those integrated supports, those are the supports that students are receiving that are case managed by us. And to be a case managed student, there is no income requirement. You just have to be in the school that we're in. And so we serve everyone. We don't bill Medicaid, it's none of that type of stuff. Anybody who feels like they have a need for us, we can serve them. And in that need is the attendance, it's the behavior, it's the course grade. This year, we focused on social-emotional learning. And so what we do does work. And so we're intentional about it and we make sure that we're addressing the need of not just the school but the student on an individual basis. The next one, please. And so if you look at this slide, you're seeing how our students are maintaining or improving their GPA. And so we have some successes. And you can see there by GPA. And usually every school year, we focus on a couple of things. And you can go to the next one, please. We focus on reading and math because those are two things that we know that our kids struggle with. And that's just generally, not just here locally, but everywhere. But you can see that some of the areas that when they started with us, they were declining, but they improved in the second quarter. But on the flip side of that, you also see where there was some decline as well. And sometimes it fluctuates. The household changes, the needs of the student might change. And then we have to go in and figure out what changed with this child and how can we be a better support to that student. And so there's no one rhythm, no one method to reach every child, but we try to cater it to that specific child in order for them to succeed. And so if you notice, like at Crowd Out, you know, we were able to increase performance in that second quarter. We haven't gotten our third quarter data yet, you know, or the fourth quarter yet, of course, but third quarter, we're still working on compiling those numbers. But we're actually able to see success. And I always tell site coordinators during the school year, between that second and third quarter, it's going to fluctuate. I don't, I don't really worry about it too much then, but the intent is address the issues so we can have a stronger fourth quarter. We set goals with our students, whether it be academic or the behavior or course grades, because the focus is to get them better performing, coming to school, reducing those behaviors. And when we set those goals, it's actually up to the child to achieve them. We just make sure that we're encouraging, we're motivating, and giving them the necessary tools to make sure that they succeed. Because sometimes the conversations that should happen in a home don't always happen. And so we have to need that extra boost for them. We all know that one, it only takes one caring adult to really make an impact on a child. And oftentimes, it is our site coordinator, it's also the teachers inside the school. But we all make sure and we come into the school to, one, collaborate and make it a team effort in making sure all the kids in those schools succeed. And so overall success, we've seen success. So 89% of our students, our casemate students, they improve in attendance behavior and academics. 97% of them are promoted to the next grade level. And 94 of our high school seniors, they do graduate. And of those 98%, they always end with some type of plan, whether it's military, a two-year college, or a four-year college, or if it's the workforce, we're making sure that they have some type of plan and that they stick, that they're sticking to it. And so it brings me joy because I live in Portsmouth. And so it brings me joy because I live in Portsmouth. I've worked in Norcom as a site coordinator. When I see my students that I've worked with, either they're doing well in college or they're either working in the workforce and they're making product. They're producing and they're being active in their community in some shape, form, or fashion. The next one, please. And so I will give it back to Ann.
So Communities and Schools of Hampton Roads is a nonprofit organization. So in order for us to have funding to provide site coordinators to the five schools in Portsmouth and to the 14 other schools in Hampton Roads that we serve, we seek funding from various sources. The greatest percentage of our funding comes from grant funding. So we write requests to entities that are giving away money, asking them to fund our projects. The second greatest funding we get is from school divisions. Three school divisions give us partial funding for the site coordinators that are in our schools. We also have individual donations. We participate in fundraisers. We have some funding, $50,000 is allocated by the General Assembly. So those are our various sources of funding. To put a site coordinator in a school costs $66,440 a year. That takes into account the site coordinator's salary, their benefits, the overheads. So paying for Shaquilla to oversee the various site coordinators, the supplies, their technology subscription, because we are a data-based organization. And so we have a Communities and Schools Data Management System program that we have to subscribe to, those sorts of costs. So for a site coordinator to be in a school, it costs $66,440 a year. We have been in Portsmouth Public Schools since 2013. We started off in one school at Norcom. We added, two years later, we added Craddock. And then we have added three other schools in 2019. That was due to a challenge grant that we received nationally. ABV Pharmaceuticals is a national corporation, actually an international corporation, that gave a huge grant to Communities and Schools, the national organization. And we qualified to expand our programming and three Portsmouth schools were added. It's called a challenge grant because they do not provide the full $66,440. They provide 66% of that and we have to provide the balance. So you wonder where our funding comes from. Our funding comes from various organizations, but specifically in Portsmouth. We're supported by the Southeast Virginia Community Foundation, the Portsmouth Service League, the Portsmouth General Hospital Foundation, and local banks like Wells Fargo and Bank of America, among other individual donors. Because we're a national organization, we have the benefit of being able to look inward. And in 2012, there was a study as to the return on investment. And it was found through this national study that for every dollar invested in Communities and Schools of Hampton Roads, there is an $11.60 return to the community. That return is quantified because high school graduates are employed at higher wages. Higher wages equate higher taxes at all levels of government, local, state, federal. High school graduates are less likely to depend on public assistance, so it decreases the cost. And high school graduates are less likely to be involved in the criminal justice system, thereby reducing the cost on society. Those are ways in which Communities and Schools of Hampton Roads is contributing to the Portsmouth community. We do get funding from other school divisions. We do not get funding from Hampton, from Norfolk, or from Portsmouth. The other school divisions give us partial funding. We're in four schools in Suffolk and they fund two and a half, two and a half schools. Chesapeake funds a full site coordinator and Virginia Beach funds two schools, even though we're in three. We would like, you can go to the next one. For our goals for the coming year, a goal that we would have would be for the Portsmouth Public Schools and the School Board to consider some level of funding. We understand this year's budget is a done deal, but we're looking forward to next year. Some level of funding for Communities and Schools. We have been providing, and you can see the slide, with all the years of the schools we've been. Over the seven years we have been Portsmouth Public Schools, there's been a $1.3 million investment by the community. And I say the community because our funding comes from the community. A $1.3 million investment of the community in providing Communities and Schools site coordinators in Portsmouth Public Schools. We would ask you to consider, as you go through the year, monitoring what we're doing, asking us any questions that you have, inviting us to come talk to you at any point, to consider funding us into the future. Because what we're doing matters in Portsmouth. Additionally, we are hoping this year to add full-time site coordinators to Douglas Park Elementary and Waters Middle. Currently, one site coordinator serves both schools. So we're going to be able to increase the number of students we serve because we're going to be able to provide a second site coordinator and, of course, to serve more students. We thank you for your time. And if you have questions for either me or for Shaquilla, we're happy to answer any of them.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions from board members?
I think you have any questions.
Ms. Chairman, I have one question.
Ms. Thomas.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Just one quick question. How I know, how do students, do they just say that they want the service? Or are they selected for the service at the schools that you're currently?
So for students to be identified for Communities and School Services, the administrators refer students to site coordinators, teachers refer students to site coordinators. If a parent is aware we're in the school and the parent is struggling with an issue, the parent can contact the site coordinator. When they meet with the site coordinator, there's an initial intake level to become a CIS student. But we collect students from anybody who says that a student is struggling.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Atkinson.
I just want to say, hopefully, we as a board, like Communities and Schools said, they have invested in our school division and they have shown that their program is successful in our school. Our, some of our schools are challenged, so hopefully we can assist in adding that additional site coordinator to that school, so.
And I do, I do want to thank you all for what you do for our students. I know the case management portion is extremely important to many of our students in our school division when it comes to even leaving high school and what to do next for our students at IC Norcom. So I thank you all for that and for the investment that you have made. And I believe that as a board, we'll take a look and see what we can do to further advance the program in our school division.
Thank you. We have our 2019-2020 Annual Report for all of you, if I could approach and bring them.
Yes, ma'am, please.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.5 is a discussion, the removal of the English grade level promotion requirement for high school. And that'll be presented at this time by Dr. Michael Cromarty.
Thank you, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, members of the board, Dr. Bracy. I think it's most appropriate to start by telling you what this proposal is not. This proposal is not to remove or amend any graduation requirements. The graduation requirements are set by the Virginia Department of Education. Every student is required to have four units of English as part of those graduation requirements. Requirements for the Advanced Studies Diploma remains at 26 credits and standard diplomas at 22 credits and will remain unchanged through this proposal. This proposal is that English is not the gatekeeper for promotion. As an example, our kids can take eight credits, or potential eight credits per year, because we're on a four-by-four. Conceivably, a ninth-grade student could pass seven of those courses and have seven credits banked, which is more than enough to be considered a sophomore. But if the course they failed is English, they're still classified as a ninth-grade student. Advancing to the next grade level generally keeps students engaged, whereas retention sometimes thwarts their efforts. Promotion would certainly be more likely for ESL students. This would be a benefit to our kids who speak English as a second language as English is most often a course that holds them back in classification. And many of the divisions around us have already made this move to, for lack of a better word, eliminate English as a gatekeeper course. Chesapeake and Virginia Beach in our region has made the move. And up on the peninsula, Newport News and Williamsburg has already led that effort. So again, I just want to reiterate that this is not relaxing any graduation requirements or reducing any graduation requirements. It's simply amending English as the gatekeeper course so that kids can be classified more appropriately by the number of credits they've accumulated as opposed to having been held back in classification because they've got an English obligation. I'll also add that because we're on a four-by-four, most kids who fail English in the first semester of a year have an opportunity already to regroup or regain that credit in the second semester. So I hope that I've clarified that point and will certainly answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Now, this is a discussion item at this time. Do we have any questions from board members? This will be on the agenda for, to vote on the 24th. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Agenda item 3.6 is our annual Title I, Title II, and Title III and Title IV Grant Application Update. And that'll be by Ms. Hales at this time. This is something we do annually that she presents to us for our students. Ms. Hales.
Good evening, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, School Board members, Dr. Bracy. This evening, I have the privilege in presenting our ESA applications. But before I get started, I wanted to make a special acknowledgement to two of my staff members who provided some support for me this evening. Mrs. Stills, our Parent and Family Engagement Specialist, and Ms. Kiana Taylor, my assistant.
Thank you so much.
Next slide, okay. So we, there are five applications that I will speak briefly about this evening. We have the Title I Part A, which is improving the academic achievement of our disadvantaged students. Our Title I Part D, which serves as intervention for neglected and delinquent. Our Title II Part A, which is supporting effective instruction. Title III Part A, which is our language instruction for our LEP students. And our Title IV Part A, which is our Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant. Next slide, please. So the grant cycle is 24 months. It runs from July 1st of each year. So this year's July 1st, 2021, and the grant cycle will end September 30th, 2023. The applications are written in collaboration with our Finance Department as well as our CNI Department. All right, so let's start with Title I Part A. Our preliminary allocation so far is $6.4 million. And I say preliminary because we use last year's funding as a guide as we begin the current application cycle. And of course, the sole purpose of Title I is to support our disadvantaged students. And it's just to make sure that all of our students are provided an equitable opportunity to resources and to close those achievement gaps. So there are currently 12 Title I schools. There are 13 elementary, but 12 of them are Title I with the exception of Churchland Elementary. So those are our 12 Title I schools which that grant supports. So our division focus under the grant, there are measurable objectives that we support: reading, math, the social emotional learning, and parent and family engagement. So what we use our funds for, we, there's professional development, there's stipends for teachers, there's tuition assistance, instructional supplies, not limited to what's listed. We provide funds for tutoring and SOL remediation, parent and family engagement, which is a requirement under Title I. And there's instructional support personnel, both school level and division level. And we also support pre-K. And there's a portion of our funds that goes to the homeless and displaced families. For the division-level personnel, the Title I Coordinator, and that's a split-funded position because that person serves on a few of the other grants and that person would be me. And then my executive associate, her salary is also split-funded. There are three division-level program specialists for math and reading. There are two behavior interventionists, there's one parent and family engagement specialist, and their salary is also split-funded. And the homeless liaison, that salary is split-funded as well. On the school level, we fund 12 parent liaisons at the 12 Title I schools, 44 kindergarten instructional assistants, 19, that figure should actually be 18, reading coaches and interventionists. There are 12 math specialists or resource teachers and one pre-K teacher and one pre-K instructional assistant that's housed at Mount Hermon. Going on to Title I Part D, this is the neglected, delinquent, or at-risk. The preliminary allocation for that is about $194,000. And there are three main purposes of the Title I Part D grant. And it's just to service the students who are in the facility and just to ensure that those students are afforded the same resources as they would get if they were in a school setting. And then there's another component to keep them from dropping out of school. Now, this funding goes to Harbor Point Behavioral Healthcare. It's a neglecting and delinquent facility. You may remember it was formerly known as the Pines, but now they're Harbor Point. And it provides funds for consultants for their teachers. We have provided some instructional resources, which are the Chromebooks, iPads, some classroom libraries. We've purchased some site licenses and we've also provided some literacy support for them. And then we also support their CTE program, which is cosmetology, music and artistic expression, and barbering. Now, Title II Part A supports effective instruction as it relates to our teachers and staff. That preliminary allocation is about $759,000. And the sole purpose of Title II is to ensure that our classes are taught by teachers that are licensed and highly qualified and to make sure that we provide, that their funds are available for them for professional development that will promote and increase our student academic achievement. So our Title II funds are used to provide professional development for our teachers. We also use it to recruit properly licensed and endorsed teachers. We provide funds for advertising and relocation assistance. We also provide funds for the instructional support personnel, which I'll talk about in just a moment. And there's a required component under this of the private school set aside. Under Title II, our private schools get funds for professional development and training for their teachers and staff as well. Under the personnel that we sponsor, under Title II is the Title II Coordinator. That salary is split-funded. The school improvement and professional development coordinator salary. The executive associate, their salary is split-funded as well. We have one division-level science program specialist, two division-level reading specialists, which serve, service the middle and high school. One division-level math program specialist for K6. And then we have one division-level social studies program specialist that works on the high school level. Under Title III Part A, this is, we don't get a lot of money on this application, this grant, which is about $12,000. Dr. Prospera Calhoun happens to be the coordinator for this application. So those funds are used to ensure that English language learners attain the language proficiency. We pay for a part-time bilingual parent liaison. We, there are funds set aside for professional development, training, workshops, and conferences. And there's also funds set aside for materials and supplies. Title IV Part A, it's one of our newer grant applications. We just started receiving this about three years ago. We started at about $89,000 and you can see how much it's grown, up to $495,000 roughly as our preliminary allocation. There are three categories under which we have to, that this grant is set aside for. Provide students with access to well-rounded education, improve the conditions for a safe and healthy learning environment. And then there are funds set aside for technology and the use of data for technology. the use of data for technology. This last past year with COVID, we were able to use some funds under technology. We set aside some leftover funds that we had, and we were able to purchase additional Chromebooks, some webcams, and some hotspot devices that we reallocated funds for. So under well-rounded education, these are some of the things that the funds can be used for. It's not limited to this list, but these are just some of the things that you can use Title IV Part A funds for. STEM, music, and arts, foreign language instruction, accelerated learning programs, college and career counseling and guidance, social-emotional learning activities interventionists, and environmental education. Under safe and healthy students, as you can see, the list is all about making sure our students are safe and healthy, training school personnel in drug and violence, bullying harassment, building school and community relationships, mental health crisis and suicide prevention, and there's a dropout prevention component that you could, we also could, we could use funds for as well. Other activities, physical education, culturally-sponsored teaching, and the list goes on, but the safe and healthy students, as you can see, their list is quite extensive. Under the support of effective use of technology, what we basically have used funds for under this, under Title IV, is for technology PD. We've been able to pay stipends for those persons who have provided our tech camps over the summer. We only use about 15% of the $495,000 for technology, but as I stated before, we were able to use a larger chunk this last year because we were able to buy some technology So what we use Title IV funding on the division level, we, there are three behavior interventionists. We pay for a part of the salary for the parent and family engagement specialists, because one of the components under safe and healthy was building the families and communities. There's one school counselor, and we use funds for our parent and family community events. We use it more so for our non-Title I funded schools. Churchland Elementary, the three middle schools, and the three high schools, we allocate funds for them under Title IV Part A. This year, we've added some additional STEM instructional materials and supplies. We've added the music component, where we're adding some music equipment, enrichment activities. As I stated before, the technology PD for staff, and then there's a requirement under the private school set aside that we set aside money for the private schools under Title IV Part A. In summary, the allocations, the applications are due to VDOE by July 1st. All allocations are level funded, which means that they are last year's amounts until the final allocations are released in August and September. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much. Great job as always, and kudos again to you and your hard-working team. You all do so much for our school division, being a small team with a large job. So I really thank you all for everything that you do. Do we have any questions at all from board members? Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Agenda item 3.7, discussion and review of the agenda for Thursday, June 24th, 2021. As always, board members, if you have any additions or additions for the agenda, please just forward them to Dr. Bracy and myself. And if there are no questions with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 3.8, which is roll call vote, consideration of contract for musical instruments and accessories. I'll ask Mr. Falk to come forward, but the contract is in board docs, and I'll entertain a motion at this time for this contract.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Heinz, second by Ms. Williams. Are there any discussion or questions for Mr. Falk at this time? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson? Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillich?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patello?
Yes.
Is unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.9 is discussion for subcommittee reports. Do we have any reports to be made tonight at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Heinz, and then Mr. Parent.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, board members. Ms. Williams and I met as the CNI committee last week. Was it last week? Last week. And one of the things that we discussed tonight, we've already discussed tonight, which is the English requirement for retention for high school. The other thing we had an update for was summer school, and summer school with elementary and middle staff ready to roll. We've got seven or eight sites for elementary, edu, sorry, elementary, summer school. Some schools are being put together so that, you know, we can run dual schools. The request was made that we make every effort possible to try to get in-staff in-school summer school for our high schoolers, because the discussion about whether we do virtual or whether we do in-person with high school, we had that discussion, and so they're, they're going to make every effort to get our high school students in-person summer school as well this year, not just virtual. And then we had a brief update about graduation. All is planned, and that is this, two Saturdays from now, the 19th at Old Dominion, and that's it for the Curriculum and Instruction Committee.
Thank you so much. Mr. Parent?
Yes, for the Budget Finance Committee meeting on the 8th. Normally, we receive the final state revenue in early June, but we're probably going to, it'll probably be late June this year, and that's due to the sales tax projections, an adjustment in the ADA for March 34th, and the COVID-19 relief fund and the loss payment. The other thing we talked about is that every five years, we, well, the city will send an RFP out for the auditors. Well, this year, we're going to be changing auditors, and I know that this is going to be, we're going to have to give Mr. Falk some tums or something stronger, because every time you change an auditor, you've got new procedures. And I think the firm is Clifton, Lawrence, and Allen, and they will be, come aboard, and Mr. Falk and his staff will be learning their procedures, and as well as the city. So we wish you best of luck. And then updating on year-end spending reappropriation, you know, the, I think the liaisons probably could address that, but we have a very good relationship with our, with our city council, and a good relationship. Dr. Bracy has been meeting with the city manager, and so that is, that is going well. Of course, you know, in years past, we're not going to talk about years past, but now going forward, we don't have to give an account of what we actually have in the books of June, at the end of June, in covered funds, so that is looking very good, and that's because we have a good city council that is working with the school system, and there will be some projects that we will use this summer, and you'll, you'll know more about those later once the, the final figure is, is done. So all in all, our finances are looking good. I asked about the burn rate, and that's kind of something that we're just going to have to wait on, because we just have to wait until the state sends its projections. So Mr. Falk and his team will be working and getting that to us probably, maybe, not having a July meeting, but it probably will be at the retreat, at least at the retreat. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir.
Chair.
Ms. Heinz.
Can, can, Mr. Parent, I may have missed it, and it's hard to hear down this way. Why are we not with Cherry Beckhart?
The city may not change yet.
The city?
The city, yeah.
And you, then, well, Mr., okay.
Okay, thank you.
It was.
It's, it's very difficult to hear down here, and I didn't want to interrupt.
It was, it was Cherry Beckhart, but it's now Clifton, Lauren, and Allen.
Why?
This was the five-year, this was the, last year was the last year of the contract for the city. So they put out an RFP early in the winter. We were on that committee. At the end of that particular RFP, it was, the winner was Clifton, Larson, Allen, and so they will be our new auditors going forward. So we're working with the city for all of the new guidelines, new procedures, so on and so forth. Obviously, as you're aware, that's a very difficult process, because you have to write up all of your procedures for the new auditors, as well as determine how they do their audit. So we're working with the city on that, trying to make sure that we have everything in order, and so that we kind of know what our walking papers are going forward. But that was a formal RFP, and Cherry Becker didn't win, so.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other subcommittee reports? Thank you all again. Do we have any other comments or concerns? Seeing none, hearing none, I now declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.